Call the ready order. Meeting Tuesday, seven, two thousand twenty-two to order. I feel the time is six oh one. I show we have a form and including Wayne, uh, just space from Zoom world. And first off, I'll need a consideration of all council members to participate. Yeah.
Hi.
Um, next up, we have adoption agenda. Do we have some changes or?
Yes, I have some additions. So under consent agenda number three, consider that the September joint, we want to present a report for the board to step in to join to change under the board. And then under re-business, um. Okay, number four will be discussion consideration of the period of work from the village hall refracing project and then the group of people who are trying to see six thousand dollars in the hand or in agreement, fifteen to one hundred review, over the bug. Consider the section consideration of the period of work from the village hall, making the firm a decision to see if like an ever to do on link just electric PDA picture, light picture out of not to be good for that with our team or second. There's six, the schedule consideration of any kind of sewer access issue between this whole here and the district that directs staff to conduct study to determine graduate or renovation properties, banks and flow out of the court, which are other amendment and meeting. Number seven, the section consideration of internal facilities, supply, or complete these. Okay, what else? Okay.
Okay, any questions? The open topics, which I'll add when I get there.
Yeah, open topics, open topics.
All right, there's no sort of changes. Any motion to adopt the agenda as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, next up, we have pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the body of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Moving on, um, public hearing, do we have anyone that has signed up?
No.
What's this on? Anyone on the line? Tell me your question.
Not yet.
That's all I'm saying. So anyone up in Webex land or something new? Give me a second.
I think calling user two is just Wayne's audio, so it, there's, yeah.
There's no one signed up.
There's somebody else on user two, right?
It's, it should, looks like it's Wayne's audio. Yeah.
All right, everyone. Uh, first of all, it's reports and updates, managers report for sale.
Nobody's talking. Nothing going on. We're on schedule.
Further, right.
You'll have stuff on with your future and then that's more action.
Okay, all right, next up, we have manager report.
Um, nothing related to report other than, uh, thank, thank you all for coming to the IM last week. Um, I'll probably send a follow-up email on kind of the upcoming steps and where we're at in the process in regards to the heritage subdivision or the heritage rezoning. Um, other than that, all the other, kind of the same feature on the work session, a few action or items, a discussion for you guys.
Okay, any questions for honor? Now, the bond to Rosa's court.
I do have two questions.
All right.
So if you were driving around today, you go to CFT was out fixing.
And then she didn't fix it.
Yes. So I have not went back and looked at the inventory compared to what they corrected in a lot of areas, I saw that stuff around the house actually done, so.
So, fine, um, like, cause I look at that as just, and I don't know if you saw, if you brought up a lot more X and T, but it just looks like it was thrown.
Oh, it's a narrow solution.
Okay. But my eyes suggest if they're gonna do that, that's, if you put some, somewhere they put down on pathways that turns into like concrete, you know, is that what this stuff does?
I don't understand.
It's a shame because it would, it would.
Wash the apartment.
Exactly, or something right now, it's actually enforced to go off, it'll, it'll be loose, but once it gets wet, tends to get like a compound, you know, that's what they did with the things, but I can't tell P F D what the position of any of the one, maybe a five and six eventually.
Well, when they did spec, when they did the roof, the shoulders is concrete on gravel on the edges of the roof, which holds up a lot better than just dirt, but I don't know what they're, what they prepared. I saw they were out working this one, but I've been busy.
Well, it's new, but at least they're on. Any options?
Um, I have to ask about the urban road traffic, so I don't think it's a good idea. Some of them keep following the patch, or keep it on the end and keep it on the other. So I'll add it to the next work session, just to say it's a bonus of things to have something to do with. Pay wire, however. Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Um, that's the Rosa. So we have, uh.
Come on in.
Did you have the Easter report? I was, I looked at it, I was like, wow, there's not much going on. Like, for like blow farm.
That's good. I saw that for Wayne.
It, it has been, um, certain things have been going back to the town, school back out, sun is coming back in, we're starting to get, take in a couple of things, um, around the area, parts in the area have had a bunch of legal break-ins, so we tried to increase controls at the park to keep the, uh, the break-ins happening within here, um, town with the mark, it's been outside of the county, it hasn't been here. Um, we've had a couple of car over, we're expecting stuff to start making back up once again, slowly now. But for the most part, it has been a decent month. Um, a couple of things that you want to say is summertime safety tips, exactly, cool, just make sure you're aware of surroundings, make sure there's no nuisance in the, in the water. Um, once again, uh, if you have it, make sure your vehicle will balance it, make sure it's hidden, not going to be a part of it. And last thing is, they have those temperatures going up, and, um, it's definitely takes a toll on your hot weather.
And I. The other thing I encourage is to take your kids to the gas station and watch the, the, the meter go up. I did that today, and like, they go, oh, it's for top movers, everybody pay.
My gas.
Little shock, you know, good driving and stuff, so. All right, any questions for Tom? As always, great job. Thanks, Tom. He said.
Can we go to her?
You're the first. I think she needs some. Side joke.
Kid beat you. It's a good one. It's a zinger.
Actually, I think I got it. Uh, next up, planning board. Do we have anyone?
Coming.
Uh, what? Are they having anyone?
We don't have to say anything, you don't have to say anything. Another block, hard stuff.
No, just, it was just, uh, you, what we, we talked about in the, uh, work session, which was, uh, just about the accessory dwellings and stuff like that, so.
Well, we'll, we'll have more, probably a talk or five from meeting yesterday, and how we want to plan for it, or our plan, which will be more involved in how we, we get into that. All right, um. Next up, we have P R N G report.
Um, we have meetings morning, very good, quick. Um, we bring our, we are gonna try to, um, have a junkie, um, by the department, doing a few articles on sessions, and have, have a big, uh, little, we bring our, our day. We'll be doing, we'll be that, we'll be looking at all that stuff. Um, we're ordering a lot, we're all going out of projects or any.
Eagle Scout.
Legal stuff, project, a little more, in terms of the law incident, how many of them, what they did. We also have a brief discussion about kind of what, what part of the three weeks, um, what their, the record is, what their, what their goal is, um, you know, so lots of matches and a lot of agreements by the board. Um, we may not always think what they advise, but we were always listening on the, um, we didn't know that, and then they started, they started on our national layout, but I was, I was believing.
It was very brief.
So the national plan is Tuesday, August second, about thirty, so we're running to come up with, um, a long one.
So I'll far back this forty-seven, do you think?
I don't think I'll far back to go, I, I was looking for you, but.
It's gonna probably go back to around two thousand and ten, from what I've heard from Derek, it may go back a little further.
It's been a same true.
It's, it's been a couple different troupes, um, but he's, Derek knows a lot of projects that we just didn't know about.
Also, there were different things, so.
Can we work to get ours, uh, financial layout?
Five thirty to, not that time?
We're, we're thinking about making it go later for a movie, so it's, it's yet to be determined, the official times.
But I think it's certain time.
I, they might want to start, you guys briefly talked about starting it, starting it a little later because we're going, going later, but that, we haven't made a final determination on that.
So I'd say five thirty, six thirty, we're here.
Thank you. Um, next up, we need, uh, consent agenda, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So, hold on a second.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, man, you're here, we're listening for it. Public hearing, he, uh, open public hearing. Um, for the consideration of ordinance, we've done a recent annex Marvin Village subdivision. Okay, subdivision.
Under the collar.
Oh.
That was Wayne.
So opening the public hearing for consideration of the ordinance, we've done a recent annex Marvin Village subdivision, tomorrow, presidential, R U C. Can I go for that?
Need to open the public hearing.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing, so then.
Just briefly, this is, these are the five properties that were annexed at the last meeting, um, per, we, then you could send out the proper notices for the rezoning, and so this is basically just a formality for, for that. Um, planning board reviewed this back in May, and, uh, staff recommended to have them zoned, R U C, just based off of their setbacks and, um, things there of the, of the, of the lots, planning board unanimously recommended that as well. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any of the lots, have you?
I'm not a hundred, no.
No, they're, I don't think any of them are closed.
Mm-mm.
Any questions from council?
Make a motion for a public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance, we're zoning the five annexed from reported at eight eight one six, eight eight two zero, eight eight two four, eight oh nine two, eight nine oh six, encountering to R U C, bar president, twenty county district, and by the, for, for head, zone enough amendment, this considers that the village acquired twenty twenty land use plan and other officially adopted village plans that is writ in public interest and are consistent surrounding use of the government.
First of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next up, we have a next public hearing. Um, to open this public hearing, consider adoption ordinance, we're jumping next minute, the section one five one point oh four, accessory usage instructions.
So this was, uh, the text amendment that was presented to you during your work session, I guess, two weeks ago now. Basically, um, it's been presented as is, there was one minor change that Chapin and I reviewed, uh, which basically is taking the Senate's out of its one fifty-one point zero five four B, or I guess A, where it had roofed accessories and had the hundred square foot exemption, moving that to the Senate's, basically after the table there. Um, other than that, that's the only change to the ordinance. It has been reviewed by Chapin, we discussed everything, and I know, um, I know there were questions about the accessory dwelling and any of that, so if there's any specific questions on that, we'd be happy to answer, but other than that, I think that.
Did we add that there?
For.
No, you didn't, uh, but you can do that as soon as you finish this.
Yeah, cause this is just an overview, but. But if you want to open the public hearing, you can just. The.
We're, we're ordered for a very text amendment, the section one five one dot oh five four, accessory uses instructor.
All right, we got, we got it right now. All in favor?
Aye.
Just let you say, so if we get, if this was conditional use, you've got to get older, but this legislate, that's gotta go.
Ah, that's fair.
Now, this should be.
So, okay, did you do your homework by, by planning board, did we do this before?
I did that. Uh.
So the planning board's good for, right? Is there another thing?
Yep, like I said, the only, the main discussion out of planning board was that accessory uses in dwelling, um, as it was their, kind of, their recommendation, that staff look into it and propose it to you guys. Um, I think it's, I think we're covered, and Chapin and I kind of discussed, like I said, it's, it's done as a special use, the way the, the conditions are there are pretty kind of standard, as well as like, we'll have that protection where any accessory used or accessory, accessory dwelling will have to come before council for approval.
And Chapin, here with us.
So, so say, for instance, they come to you, and it's not working, it's, you say, no, you can, whatever, do they have the right, then is their process go for counsel?
Well, that's, 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 that's. That is a role of the board of adjustments, I don't like the interpretation of staff member, they can fill that decision, board adjustment, that board adjustment can confirm or deny or some way. But they do have other procedures, so you have a staff member that's, um, here being called in.
And, and just.
Start where Wayne, if, if it goes to that process.
What?
I think the intent is to put more conditions where they don't have to go anywhere, circumstance on the small ones, that are agricultural use and other, but all these conditions, and also the exit, the swimming pools.
And to be clear, is this still a complaint?
For, what are we referring to?
Well.
Uh, structure of the dwelling, accessory dwelling.
Structure.
Structure, no, the only time it would go through, uh, well, it would go through planning board for that recommendation, it would be kind of, you know, the standard, our current process right now, if we got a, an application for a pool that a butt's a rear yard or whatever, um, it would come to staff and then go to planning board for their recommendation, and council makes the final decision. I don't, I don't turn anything away outside of, it, I mean, that's, the only import, the only authority I have is if it's basically meets these regulations. But that, the way that we, this ordinance was then drafted, was taking that special use permit, so when you guys don't see so many of them, still having the, basically the same generic conditions that you guys review require, and as long as the applicant meets that, then it is approved administratively. If it doesn't meet that, then they still have an avenue of applying for a special use permit, um, but at the same time, if either one of those get denied, or, uh, then that's where they can go to the board of adjustments for that appeal. Cause.
Questions?
Make my motion for a spot.
First of discussion.
This one needs to be amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it doesn't?
Yeah, it does.
No, I pointed the motion.
Not this one.
You change it again?
Wayne, we're not here anymore.
Did, no, could you change it again?
Next up.
What you gave me earlier?
That's the ordinance, but the actual language is amended slightly.
I need that then. It's still, it's gotta go amended.
It will be amended.
As amended.
As amended.
For the discussion.
That one changed, that one, like, I guess, it was a wording change, it wasn't anything with regulations, but.
Just a little bit of change to.
As amended.
I'll get, I'll get your copy for the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Wayne?
I think he dropped his audio.
If Wayne, if, um, we did initial, we did initially because we were getting feedback, but he, he had the opportunity, he can unmute from his side. If his audio has went down, he, I don't believe he can continue. Oh, they're good. They're good.
Okay. Uh, Joe and, uh, Kim, you're the only two people that are not here.
We're, 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 we're talking, Wayne.
So far, pretty much a lot of them are stopping, but that speaker's right in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Don't remember, we were, we were, we're not here, we don't have.
Not real, I don't, we might.
Well, I don't have anything else on these.
We, we might have, uh, some other mics that we can break out, we have to find them.
Just wire them.
Just say, uh, just say, uh.
If you're not close to speaker, you're gonna have to project.
All right. Okay, so moving, moving on, next up, the village hall.
Uh, so I have a couple of things, first name is the same to the maintenance, uh, the staff maintenance. Um, I did ask our, our best guys about changing the amount of some kind of free standing to buy loads, um, he did say that they have to be eighty-eight compliant, I mean, protect the building, we could change the amount in two thousand and two. Yes.
Can they be pretty in eighty-eight?
So if we could do it, the right risk, where the state comes in, we would have to change them back out, something eighty-eight compliant.
Why, why, that's not for eighty-eight compliant, and if you just hit one.
They want, they wanted to be.
A reasonable accommodation, so I, I'll see, I say, I want to use a board here.
That one or that one up there?
That would be reasonable accommodation, I agree, it's, it's, it's right here in the building, it's not like they got it on the house.
All right, I see, I give it until January, two, six months, and then we're good, the thing, and then just walk out.
Um, speaking of that, can we, I mean, can we, we're, trying to, just.
It's all like.
Like, with the like, Trump.
That wasn't the contract, anything.
It's on my.
I think, I think. That is, what is, the spirit against it, these buttons and things that, I mean.
It's fixed.
It's kind of fun, cause you can go to the beep and it doesn't work, and you look like you're not supposed to be here.
Those are, those got fixed this morning.
I, I, I'm. This is a creepy guy, I don't know at all. I was mayor.
Um, I'm actually gonna move the second item to a further topic, in fact, maybe I'm gonna remove that. And then the last, the bulletin boards, I need to bring some examples to you guys, but I just want to know if you guys are looking for, we have to have one, but, um, looking at something freestanding, like you got a hill built tall, obviously prettier than that, or something adhered to the building, so just, y'all just let me know, adhered to the building, or freestanding.
Or even here.
For outside.
Outside. We have got all the work outside of the premises.
I'll bring back some examples, when y'all, you know, let me know what your consensus is on style.
I did, I thought they, I know we have to have one, but I, I've seen in places where they've been actually in the building.
In the building?
Mm-hmm.
The term was.
Does anybody have any preference, freestanding on the outside and inside?
I'd like it attached on the outside wall, or something like that. It takes away from the look of the building, though, if it's the only thing that, I mean, I'm with you, Joe, but I just feel like it, it takes, it distracts from the look of the building.
Could be an eagle's mouth, I don't think they have something that would keep it where it's on the mailbox.
It does need to be weather resistant.
Same thing, or by the mailbox, which is a great place, where, where you drive off.
It looks cheap, little, like.
But we have to actually stand out there and change the.
I also have a, the last side, and he can do it, he goes up with the mail. He needs extra, so, y'all.
Oh, God, I was like, no. Oh.
I like that, I like that, okay, he's down there, we gotta keep going for the day.
One more, one more piece of pollution on the road.
It's not gonna work, it's just.
Oh, God. I'll bring back some examples and, um, we can make a decision.
We have that, we, we got this.
We probably need it sooner than that, though. Add it as an Eagle Scout project, but we need it, we need, we'd need it sooner than an Eagle Scout could build it.
We'll get something, we'll get some examples.
Awesome, key, one little, like, little, little.
Voice outs cute, I'm not sure how that's on a board here.
And I'll bring back a board session, and I'll give a, um, track and sheet, I don't know, finances, I don't know.
Girls have the voice outs, so we can keep a voice.
We have two with ears.
That's right there.
We have a pretty active list, we're trying to chop down on, most of the, there's a mirror turn there.
The door, right before, I think it's, oh, yes. Oh, you have.
More discussion, village hall.
It just needs to go up, where it's, this really happens, say, porch mess.
Uh.
So I, I see that.
There's a plaque to do it on, isn't it?
Yeah. So, if you're gonna have a plaque like that, we don't want to put it on, to take away from the wall or the building, or you just take a center post and throw it in some concrete and sit it on the post and just lock up.
Or, or.
Good.
Not right now. We'll add it to the work session, we won't put it up.
Are the, uh, barn rooms on that list? Barn rooms for, for the kitchen?
Well.
Need barn. We gotta go with the shop.
We do, I do.
And that, that's all I have right now.
Yeah, you know, all, all.
Okay.
Must be nice.
All right, next up, unfinished business.
We don't have anything.
Pretty.
We don't have any unfinished business.
Everything's finished.
Everything's moved.
We're, 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 we're.
Yeah, it's taken up in July, um.
Nineteen.
Yeah, okay. Um, next up, new business, uh, first up is the session of grants and, uh, P, PTO for part time.
No. Part.
Staff.
Part, staff.
For part staff, yeah, no, what's PTO stand for?
Pay time off.
Pay time off.
That's what this is, dude, they, they.
There was no description, it just said PTO.
Yeah, that's right, sorry, guys, my fault. Um, I had a discussion with a couple of council members about, came off of, pay, pay time off, part staff, or kind of a thank you for marketing and all the stuff that they've been working on, so I'm just gonna let y'all discuss that and tell me if you want me to do that, so, coming out, if you want me to do that.
Well, it, it all started with the, um, part staff, appreciation, yes, right, appreciation day, because the middle of, wow, so, 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 which we, it's a procedure, I was talking about, and I was, it looks like a nice one, like, part staff, and I was like, and then like, let's give them like, a couple days off, like, hey, like, they don't have that, I think that, I mean, instead of getting like a car or.
No, no, no.
No, okay, but I'm just saying, like, I think it would be nice, and that would be, they work their butts off the morning, they are doing a great job, they're around the house, they're tall, I mean, they're taking on a lot more responsibility, and, and, you know, just be something nice, and they, you know, get the period of money, all that stuff.
Go for part time. Your say?
I say yes, nothing, Scrooge. Let's not get Scrooge. You're having Scrooge?
Uh, oh, you're calling me, Steve?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I'm on board, cause we discussed it, we came up with the idea together.
Yes, it was not idea, it was actually.
Uh, wait, get that in there.
And if we want to do what I would say a couple of days, I wouldn't say a week.
No, no, I would, I would think two days, two to three days.
Two to three days, a day time, not just being specifically two to three days, a day time off, for a part-time worker, or is that two to three days, like, if a part-time worker works five hours a day, is that, that five hours considered the day for him, or is it a full day?
It would be whatever normal hours they work, if they worked five hours, it would be five, and they worked eight, eighty-eight.
Okay, so it's a day, or a part-time, or a day time off, or a full day.
Yeah, I'm good with two days off, and the lunch, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good gratitude for, uh, for their extra hard work that they get for a part of the day.
Yeah, I'm good.
Maybe take a lot.
Let's do that.
Let's make the motion to grant, two, take time off for Park Staff, and then, hold on, over there, hold time off for Park.
Say it one more time, to grant what? Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Two paid time off days for Park Staff. I mean, like, the part numbers, they're five hours, and they get two, they get ten hours, and then it's over nine days, or eight hours, whatever they're.
What's up with that? And then, is this in either annual thing, or just sort of an appreciation, what's that?
So to grant two paid time off days to Park Staff. Okay, I just need the motion rate.
So, you know, it's the after discussion, you should.
Yeah, I understand, and I'll direct Eric to make sure that he's had his people cover. And I'll have him say that again. Got it?
Okay, further discussion. All votes in favor? Aye. Aye. Some extra councilman in there. Uh, next up, the session of coffee with council. Yes, council.
I got my two days off, though.
Okay, alright, pull my schedule. Apologize. Schedule ready. Okay, so for July.
July.
July's up.
Yep. Ten to eleven AM.
I can do that.
Joe?
I can too.
And Wayne?
We need to add that in with the coffee with council.
Okay.
I'm good for the twenty-seven.
You mean the twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Okay, Bob on the twenty-six, six to seven PM.
Six.
And Jamie?
Wait, what time is it? July seventh at ten?
Ten to eleven.
Thursday's August tenth.
I know.
I need to go with that, so.
Okay, on to August, uh, the fourth, from ten to eleven AM.
I can do that.
Kim?
I can do either, if you want.
Don't you do it, no, come on.
I just need you to.
I set myself a bed.
Who wants to do it? Uh, Wayne, do you wanna do the, the fourth, or Joe? Joe? Okay, Joe. Okay.
Four.
So Kim and, so Kim and Joe on the fourth. August twenty-third, six to seven.
Uh, I'll do that one.
Andy?
I'll do the first.
Andy and Jamie. Alright, and then we go on to September, September, something else for me here, September first, ten to eleven AM.
I should, I'll, I'll take it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one.
Bob?
Yeah.
See what's why, uh, this.
Okay. And.
That's gonna be last thing.
It's five, and he, yeah, really, so.
Why do you cry, you're sixteen?
What? Okay, but we're still doing it. So who signed up for the September first?
Bob did.
Anyone else? I'll do it.
Bob and Joe.
Yeah.
So the first is Luke.
Yeah.
And then we have September twenty-seventh, six to seven PM. Andy?
I'll go with Andy.
Andy and Kim. That'll work.
And but did we say the word in Congress at six?
Okay, six, six, we're finished.
Are you on right now? Yeah, make sure, um.
Coffee?
Alright, next up, we're considering agreement, renewal with the county for task hours and services, and authorize the county to execute the contract. Any questions or concerns, gentlemen? Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Next up, other topics?
Nope.
No.
Oh, that's our program.
If you refresh your iPad screens, the new items will show up.
Uh, next up, discussion consideration of way through this requirement for, uh, right, 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 enter agreement. Bootbrush, nothing to sixty thousand dollars, and allow management to execute very intensive part-time review.
Christine, uh, is that, everybody's doing a nice pre-venture, that I drew with, uh, the, 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 in terms of the maintenance for, I'm sorry, the regrading slash continued maintenance of village hall, preparation for continued maintenance, maintenance village hall. Uh, now, we want to reiterate that the area that you see here basically includes fifty-one acre service area that DQ said we can't go around, however, we feel that we're restabilizing this whole quickly, so we don't think it's gonna be a huge issue for DQ, uh, they're basically gonna come in and slug, reslug that area, so it's easier for David to screw to maintain. Uh, there were two loads received. The first one was fifty-five hundred from the same gentleman who did the pocket park, the second one was fifty-six hundred from Bootbrush, I think is the name of it, in Marvin, a couple, uh, businesses here in Marvin, there, first we go Bootbrush, to a bit more, not much more, so we're just asking for, um, way of retrieving requirement for this project, and to go ahead and incorporate six thousand dollars, he's gonna take some funding away from the park projects that he did not get done this year's budget, and get this project done.
So, so would you sit there, prefer to go with that, normally, and go with the loads, is there a particular reason?
A hundred dollar difference in the.
Does that matter?
Well.
Could be a personal friend, I don't know, I'm just saying, it's, it's all like we live in, it's, we gotta be careful.
But, but, of course, it's been a one hundred before, I think, and, and, they, they did a better job of the people who worked at the pocket park, because we had half a black hour. But they, they're the first quality of Bootbrush it. Christine, that the three trees to the right, would be, uh, are they, are they, has the tree stump maybe cut down?
No. Those are the, 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 the trees over here, that's just reference, where we wanna put that mulch. Yeah. The front ones, that two hundred fifty year old oak, it's just a reference, that's what we want to pile the mulch back there, or that tree, yeah, it's just a reference. That'll, we'll store the mulch back there until it's solid, and then it'll go around the base of the big trees, but, um, the urban forester advised we let it sit for six months.
Take one, I forgot.
That's, that's the plan, we just wanna put it back there, or something. Nice, alright.
Uh, we may lose here to a party. Next question, way through this requirement, for all of our projects, and agreeing with Bootbrush, nothing to five, six thousand dollars, and allow the project to be driven. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Next up, the discussion consideration of way to retrieve the requirement for the go-talk, offering the parking key requirement for pedestrians and land safety lights, and a purchase agreement with Landship Electric, PDA, light fixture, uh, nothing to see fifteen thousand dollars, and since they.
And it.
And we're just have to, it's not there.
It, it cuts me off character limits, I have to put the description.
I'm just reading from the top of it, and direct staff, prepare our other dimensions.
He's over there, bro.
I was just reading.
And, and.
I don't like that, ain't it beautiful?
So after a couple of, um, months of deliberation, we did have a approval on the light fixtures that were put out into the park area for pedestrian lights, and land safety lights, and a lot of the area, as they get started, um, we did work with the vendor that dropped this here, we got almost a hundred dollars for her light savings, because that would, that would, and, well, they look exactly like the ones that are on the side of the, the building up here at the exit, the side of the, the soup hall. So we're just asking for approval from the.
Where, where are we showing this?
The.
What's that light? That's one that he had put in there, I don't even have to see.
Now, and that's not gonna, that's not gonna be anything.
It may not be anything, that is.
And so there, so, there are some more lights that we need to require, uh, I can get heatwave lighting through loads, or the well lights, which are very expensive, they're like fifty bucks a piece, they're plastic wells, with bulbs come on, we don't need good, he didn't even know what a well light was, so that bothered me a little bit. Uh, I can order them through loads, and the step lights, I'll probably get through them, I'll heat, and I was looking at some today when I was in there, and they, they actually have some that you can that you can put on post-construction, screwed to the stack, so. Wire, but it ends up, teeny, teeny tiny little wire, you'll never see it, and I'll run it out to the end, and then we'll screw the, the lights. You will see it, because you'll crawl up under there, and look, but nobody else will.
There's no price, we, uh, we're the.
So.
So then, where is the, I guess, transformer, or whatever?
So, so the transformer will be over here on the wall, behind the efficient units.
So that's a whole across you?
It's already purchased.
Okay.
I've already got it, and I've got five hundred feet of wire. The plan was to do the, run the wire before things got done, and it just never got done, so it's.
Very.
Got it, and I'll start working on this system soon.
Alright, good job.
We can have this coffee?
This, this is the couple, this.
Then you keep waiting to.
The guy.
Oh, that guy.
This is the guy.
It's your guy. No, it's, it's that.
It's that.
Right.
That guy, yeah, good.
I like the big question, whether to retrieve the parts to village hall, or even park for pedestrian, and that state lights, and in the purpose agreement with Landship Electric, PDA. Light fixture. And, I just see fifteen thousand, eighty. Direct, you have to prepare a budget.
You shouldn't even try, I'm sorry.
Hey, that's a little.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Just slide back here, sorry. Oh my God, here, as you get.
Better, better, we didn't, we, we, it's happening, you're bad.
Okay, um, next up, discussion consideration of the county's sewer access issues within the municipal areas district, and direct staff to conduct a study to determine gravity flow on pump station properties and passing flow, hopefully, for person.
And there.
And there. So, so.
It doesn't say anything, I would have, it's probably not be scheduled.
It's in the, it's in the description.
Dance prepared.
So, how do it, it's all asked, I already said. And to prepare a budget, the man that needers for cancel.
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 Alright, Christine, what did you do? Did you agree with us?
I thought we had a great meeting yesterday, it was enlightening to me, uh, I loved the lot, going there, um, now looking on, it was, it makes it clear why they did it, and we'd probably do the same thing, um. So, here we go, uh, six, six, twenty-two, where it brings a councilman line, that the county representatives go with the county's access sewer in projects that involve pump station, county recently denied a project in Marvin called the Heritage at Marvin, which has proposed sixty-eight mile subdivision within forty-seven acres, within the recently approved Marvin Heritage District, MHD, from assuming approval, the project was already approved at twenty-nine hours, but is currently being re-submitted to sixty-eight, either should be able to access the sewer, this project is first, is the first development proposed within the MHD consideration. If approved, the Heritage at Marvin will bring sewer extensions across Newtown, another industrialized sewer, and other projects with the MHD corridor. The denial of this project prompted elected officials to investigate the potential for all properties within MHD corridor being denied access to sewer. Summary of yesterday is being equated with the bottom quotes, county recognizes pump station maintenance is a large part to the county, elected official, officials are trying to minimize, minimalize taxpayer dollars, county feels it is necessary to explore lifecycle costs of pump stations to help determine overall financial impacts making decisions on projects, this information is expected to be completed within thirty, forty, five days. County wants to look at a greater picture of an access to projects requiring pump stations, they'd like to see more benefit than just a subdivision of two pump stations being installed. Marvin explained the need for sewer access within the MHD corridor, and this project just so happens to be the first developed. Marvin also explained the importance of this project that relates to the NCDOT roundabout project, though the sixty acre project in the middle has not been officially approved by the village of Marvin, there's a correct agreement with NCDOT and the proposed developer of the heritage to donate a portion of land for a fourth leg of the proposed roundabout at Newtown, and Marvin's will grow. If this project, whether at twenty-nine code approvals, minimal, both sixty-eight blocks minimal, is, is not approved for sewer access, the fourth leg of the roundabout project is at risk, which will cause more delays and redesign. County considers pump station for others proposed in the MHD will help service more than just a residential subdivision, that note is very important. County encourages Marvin to come up with a total flow that the MHD will generate, so they will be able to access, assess the line size needed for the proposed pump station to the treatment plant, county states the village can have a joint application with the developer, or just submit information to the developer that's in the total impact of pump station, and the generalized area would have. So the next steps, the village shall have engineers conduct a base analysis to determine which properties will need gravity versus pump station, potential magic capacity flow of each property, in addition, it will be beneficial for the village to conduct a preliminary infrastructure design layout within the corridor. This information will help the county see the overall long-term plans and demands on sewer systems, so they can better review applications as presented. None of which was budgeted, but staff feels that they can find funding if council desires to conduct this analysis. Staff is also under the impression that the Heritage at Marvin is conducting sub-engineering analysis for the recent roundabout, U, U County, but we are not sure how far down the corridor this analysis could go.
Did everybody see that last paragraph, graphs, dreams, the work, master plan?
Oh my God.
I can't say that.
So I'll, um, one, one quick, no, I want to say, it's actually, it's kind of, I just wanted to point it out, that the roundabout is in Newtown, and Marvin wrote the roundabout, at Marcus' Hall. So if this project that is being submitted is potentially, uh, if they don't have sewer access, it will potentially affect that fourth leg of that roundabout. So what staff is asking, um, cancel at this point in time, is if you guys mind, we spent some engineer dollars to conduct some studies to figure out which properties will need pump stations, which properties will need gravity flow, and, and thus, won't need a pump station, um, and then what level of flow is needed so that we can submit all that stuff to the county, uh, we'd like to have it for Jones wants to submit back, but their application is not necessary, but it is at some point necessary for us, regardless of Jones wants or not, to let the county know how much we, you know, we're gonna have flow of us.
Uh, do, do, do you remember to, because I kind of, um, they had made mention of getting the, the design plans of stuff, color-coded, can we get remember him talking about that?
Yeah, no. I actually pulled today an email that, this goes back to the county from October, that Christine and I had, um, with him, kind of, with the county, kind of, just giving us preliminary kind of drainage base, and that, um, you, we're gonna, it's got the connection to kind of where that, some of those gravity lines feed, and so kind of using this as the basis to work with the engineer to create, it, basically then creating kind of like, uh, stuff. uh, sub points on where they would be on property and then how those, those initial points have been all feeding together and gravity feed either to broad more, everything on this side feeds that way and then preserve, I mean, so we do have some of that information, which is, which is good and also can be shared, I mean, with any applicant to make sure that they include that for their proposals, but.
Are we getting that information to the engineer? Is that something the engineer?
We gave this information to our engineer. We were originally, I think, trying to get quoted prices. Just of construction, of just how much like one linear footage of sewer line and water line would be needed based off of just some of this preliminary analysis, as well as the size of line. But we're, the, I think what Christine and I discussed is kind of going more in depth with that and really trying to figure out really where it's gonna drain the sub points as well as taking our ordinance and looking at like the previous studies and stuff and the maximum potential capacity on each, each property to have that just as a, everything submitted.
To, to kind of put it in the context, I use this example, it's a very poor example, but, and I know it's not gonna happen but just for illustration, um, you could have a parcel that has, you know, a hundred residential homes. That output would be a lot different than a chicken processing plant, for example, that has a lot of output. So we need to determine what that, that level of flow is gonna potentially be at max capacity. If we had an area that could be zoned as a processing plant, which we don't for the record, but they have to look at some of those commercial uses and determine what types of output would be needed for those commercial uses.
Even though we presented them with what uses would be acceptable under commercial?
So they would, they would look at the ordinance and they would say, alright, in this section that's delineated for mixed residential slash commercial, whatever that means, they would look at what those commercial uses could be. And I don't know what, if you can name a couple of them off the top of your head, they would have a generalized understanding of how much flow those particular types of businesses would generate.
Well, we've probably determined what uses are appropriate or not, so.
We have, I mean, we.
We have talked about.
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the form base code, for like commercial. Now, with it being set up as conditional, I mean, some of those uses can be presented, like, if a commercial, let's do Fitcher. If Fitcher proposes a, a, um, rezoning application, his site plan has to be specific and those like permitted uses have to be outlined within his site plan. The permitted uses though, however, are already outlined within the, um, form base code. So it's like kind of what was Christina saying, it's like basically taking the most quote-unquote highest impact use and how those properties can be developed, because like, for example, like the commercial, I think with the maximum building size for that's fifteen thousand square foot and I think like what's just saying like a small grocer or something like that. I, taking those of basically the full build-out potential based off of the smaller area plan and what our regulations, uh, you know, present and what the, the most output would be, the highest impacted output.
So we either need to do a joint application with the developer, which I would love, or we just get the information from kids at the developer, correct?
That's what I think we're leaning towards, because from the applicant standpoint, it looks like we're going in, but we're supporting it based on what they presented to us.
And it's the whole Heritage District. I just don't want the objects of the.
Well, and to kind of add on like what Christina said was that, for my conversation with the applicant, when they got denied is that they were doing a basin study for their property, meaning what all properties surrounding them could flow to that pump station, um, through gravity, so what could be their highest potential thing, but it's not been taken into consideration maybe other properties beside them that also would gravity feed in and would then flow into that. So I think they're doing stuff to help their application, but at the same time, there's stuff that, overall, for the, either that applicant or the future of the Heritage District that we can have ready for either, I mean, like I said, for this applicant or any future proposals as well.
So, Chaplain, is there a way to reduce our engineering costs for future applicants that come in? I mean, I don't think you do it by fees.
No, but, um, gosh, it's hard to do. The only way to do it could be create like a new related district and then have this be district, that's going to be all the complicated to do. You should do that if you're in the infrastructure.
Wait, is there a way to do like? Permanent property, I think I was in the fees, right? We want to pay in order to.
Well, the other, something that was discussed is kind of making this potentially, you know, we could go ahead and have the applicant discuss and have preliminary plans for their infrastructure installation, I mean, either for this or that and make that part of their submittal for the rezoning. That's just, it's still kind of the same, it's piecemeal, like we don't.
But I'm not worried, I'm not worried about that one. I'm worried about the future, like developers, we're gonna come in and we've done all this engineering research and basically we're basically, we're basically handing it to the county and to any, any developer that comes in for, we're just, we, we don't have to talk for, for ten. If, if, if we, if he comes to us, we're like, well, you're from engineering, so this is how much your output is, this is all your engineering, like information on sewer that we have paid for. But like Heritage is, you know, Heritage Neighborhood, they're doing all that research on their end.
Well, they're, like I said, theirs from my understanding would be how, it's not taken into this consideration the whole Heritage District.
Right, just them, which, so they're doing that on their end, but once we do it, nobody else has to do it.
Not necessarily. It's very, it'd be very preliminary, like they're still, they would still have to figure out how to develop their, those properties to meet.
Right, but that's still bullshit, because ours and theirs are gonna charge us money to do that.
So, how about this, so, is it possible that, okay, so you factor, let's say, and it's not gonna be this much, let's say it costs a million dollars to get a pump station to service their needs, it's way more than they need. Well, we have a million dollars, the county wants to figure out a way to, um, assess a tax to all residents who are here in county for that, but then, so technically we have a new marketer, we need to come in, step in and say, for purposes of numbers, that area that does the sixty-eight homes, they only have two hundred and fifty thousand. So we have seven hundred and fifty, yeah, I'm just changing phrases, so it's seven hundred and fifty thousand. That number then gets basically, um, as a fee to tap into the sewer line. Is it possible to assess specific individual fees for the next, the next issue about, and say, okay, well, you're gonna have to pay.
See, that's a county issue because they're, the sewer business, we couldn't do it because we're just in the revenue for you or the, the, so what we.
But they said that was easy, when we were figuring out how the lifecycle was.
Well, that's the lifecycle for the pump station and that's on that, going to be on that applicant specifically. Long-term, I mean, one thing that I, and this is another conversation that I have with the applicant, makes that working, the, one of the properties that's gonna be, you know, a huge component here is Lett's property. Um, it's because of it, it's topography, it's gonna need a pump station. And so, or in theory it could. And so that's one thing that the applicant was looking at, working with his attorneys and potentially getting an agreement with Lett to already have that in place, where if he puts the pump station where it's at and builds a capacity and builds a stub over to Lett's property, it has all that upfront and there's an agreement in place that once Lett's property gets developed, then the developer recoup that cost. Now, that, that's something, that's a private agreement, nothing with us, um, but that's on the applicant to kind of decide there. But overall, the, I mean, kind of getting back to the main question of how to recoup our costs, the, the two ways, one, you're having this information in place to promote, not promote, but to help, you know, the Heritage District develop as we have envisioned and we, and we have these goals for, which in turn will have this increase, I mean, you're gonna see taxes, property taxes be, or value dropped.
Unfortunately, it's, and I did ask the county engineer in the last week, do they have agreements where they will have one developer pop subs and give recourse to them, because sometimes we'll do that, because it's what they wanna do is to lift up the number of pump stations they have, because it's a lot more efficient to have one big one than five smalls. And he said they don't have any employees, he's not with that.
So, I mean, are two options, are joint application or just get the information, I say let's just have our community group as a passable to whoever is asking for it.
We can, we can try to make the bare minimum amount of information.
Listen, I don't think it's the bare minimum amount of pass, okay, whatever you want.
Can that not tell for just from elevation?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, what, what I intend is basically, it's a kind of an infrastructure type master plan of all of that for the Heritage District, but it, yeah, I mean, the, um, for this proposal specifically, outside of the properties that are kind of around there are the only ones that's gonna potentially flow into that. Like anything on this side isn't gonna necessarily have an issue, but what doing this study would help is, one, yes, helping that application with all, as well as knowing what to, to, I guess, expect, as well as the future of it and what potentially might be needed. Where we don't run into this situation again, basically.
And that makes the best suggestion to work out, like, we're gonna be like footprint, they'll use for, include for everyone else. Yeah, yeah, I use that word, I didn't want to, it was like. But it was ready to be, I'm sure.
Alright, so what do we need from us? Does it take a dollar or anything? Is there anything more with that?
Wayne, now questions, did you get almost of that?
I've got a bunch of them, I don't understand it. Yes.
I can talk to you more about that coffee with counsel, but no one shows up.
Oh, no, you're happy to go.
Okay.
Alright. We need a motion.
Okay.
Next up, discussion consideration of air, facilities, supply, or no fees.
A and B.
So basically, um, we want to break back a revision to our annual fees and charges to, to add, uh, still to the, I'm sorry, taking the chair rental for Marvin and Marvin. Derek turns us two dollars per chair, five dollars per table, it's apparently going regularly rounds and rounds. Uh, so we're basically just looking to allow them to do that, we have to break back annual fee charges. He's got double rounds weekend, we want to go ahead and start raising those fees and, um, I wonder if it's possible to call the, you do, I think it is. Alright, so if you're okay with it, we'll just move forward.
Yeah, well, actually, this is the end of the question, well, this is a way ahead and then the question to amend the fee schedule for two dollars per chair.
I'm gonna make a mention to, um, add to our fee schedule for five dollars for two dollars per chair, five dollars for tables. At Marvin and Marvin.
Further discussion?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prices are coming up. Next up, open topic.
Um, we're big guys, so we're gonna have a little prayer at six o'clock, six o'clock. Christine, you're already working on nice invitations to like local municipalities and stuff, okay? What are we gonna do? Oh, I could giant person to go.
Did I make that heard off?
Yeah.
Safety scissors.
Maybe a big, a big dragon. Maybe chams.
Would they call, hey, they can all.
Champagne, shams.
Would they call, invite everyone?
Invite, invite Bill, I think you should invite, I might.
Talk about a white girl. Keep saying that.
Take that person.
Why is, uh, or it's. Business, yeah, why you go?
Um, but yeah, all people, they can't, they can't, they're basically like, oh, it's so far away. You can't even see me.
Um, if they're watching on large screen, they probably can't.
I, I, I watch.
I'm sure it's about one or two of us in this office.
Um, but like, yeah, all people, but those, those would be the nice invitations and, you know, but the, the villagers, you know, start every day.
So basically, we, when these have happened in the past, say, like, the, the, the council or mayors, you know, just that, hey, this is happening and, um.
I'm like, are you serious people?
Yeah, I mean, and anyone who's worked on the project, they're, they're, they're. That's a hard, no.
But yeah, so the champagne, oysters.
Oysters?
Or durs.
Oysters, oh, oh, that's like, what, do you wanna do the, or something like that?
No, I'm using class here, go up scale.
Okay.
Yeah, we're doing anything.
Um, it could be intentionally using the marketing money to.
Can we wait then?
No, we're not, but, but, but could we use the, um, funds that were, the overflow funds for our.
Still a couple of those.
That was for donation.
Yeah, what am I gonna do?
If not, I'll, I'll, I'll just break this, okay?
Hey, listen, I, I would say this right now, we, I've already secured the first responsible next year and it's a rush fund. And they would love to be a part of this, I guarantee you they would love your tolerance, Jim Hurd. I'm saying.
Well, their oysters are great, too.
They're really good, but I don't know. Old Fox and Helen, that was, they were pretty soft, don't they?
I would, it's a good lunch.
But I've already been there to return houses, I've gone there every time, it's been really good. This is for, it's good. But they, I encourage everyone, they've already said, they.
That's not, that's not the point, but we could ask them, or, or I could simply ask them, we ask the Southern Gourmet, if they wanna do some oysters, publics.
And the Southern, it's something.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Go to the jacket.
Save the day.
Save the day, Austin, we need to send them a save the day.
Okay. I know.
Okay, that'll.
They have to dress up and shave.
Yes, they have to shower, put some, you know, put a jacket on.
Alright, my only open topic is, I just recognize this from a friend of my wife's, they're always asking her, what's, what is the public hearing for, what is it for? Then it goes, then it goes to me, then I call Austin and confirm that it's the fireworks, whatever it is. So we have QR code on our standard QR code that we can keep changing. All I have to do is go, they're phoned to it, QR code registers and it says, oh yeah, for this public hearing. It, you know, and maybe you have to change it, but ideally it was not spend a lot of money and get one QR code that can be, that it changed from the inside.
So what we can do, we already have a page on our website for public hearing notices, so anytime those signs, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Whenever we put the signs out, um, that page is updated with, with, what goes in the newspaper explains exactly what public use for. But what I'm gonna say is that the signs, we can order new signs with a QR code on it, so when they scan it, it takes them to that page.
Yes, that's what he's talking about. But if you get a new QR code that's just for like all the hearing, because I want a new one today, why not?
URLs are, um, QR codes are tied to a specific URL, so, um, so you'd have to be in one anyway.
So you couldn't do it specifically, if you hit the QR code pulls up and it says fireworks, fireworks, is what this QR.
They don't, they don't have all, they don't.
There could be multiple.
Well, whenever you go to that public hearing page, what you see is, you see the date for the public hearing, so you can tell if it's one coming up, you see the date that it was posted in the newspaper, so you can tell if it. My point is, when you get to that page, you can easily tell what's an upcoming public hearing and what's one that was in the past.
But.
And what the.
And when you. There's a fault rule, for instance, tonight, there were multiple, and what do you envision? If I hit the QR code with my phone, what, that just leads me to the main page and then in the main page, I've gotta scroll down and.
So you won't have to do that. The most, the one, the, uh, the most recent one's the top. And whenever you click on that notice, it's the newspaper notice, so if there is public hearing scheduled for tonight, it's not one document for public hearing, it's a document that says, public hearings for such and such is happening on this day. So there's a different document for each individual day that there's public hearings.
But they can hit it either way, we're fairly correct.
Yes.
It's, yeah, you could, you could, if we did a QR code, we could access it within, you could access it in thirty seconds.
So the same sign, that's mine home for a QR code on it, that QR code takes us.
I would, I would, we'll just order some more signs, because we need to get some more, um, we need to get signs specifically for rezonings anyway, so.
Perfect, I love her, good job.
See.
Good job, you're a good partner.
Can we get that?
It's fine, it's just.
It's, it's a small purchase.
No, but I'm just saying.
Any other topics? Jen, I have to review back to that.
I'll order signs with QR codes. Let's see, uh, we'll have the village engineers conduct the analyses that were discussed. Uh, we've updated the fee schedule, we'll get that posted before rentals. I'm scrolling back, we purchased the, um, the pedestrian landscape lights and prepared that budget amendment. Has Chaplain already reviewed the boom brush for agreement? So we'll have him agree, review that and then execute that agreement. We'll execute the contract for Union County tax collection. You guys have your marching orders for coffee with council. We'll work, we'll get the PTO for park staff. Christina will bring back examples of bulletin boards at the work session. We're going to hold off on sinks for now. And that's about it.
Just being able to go, discuss the flag at the work session. And update the sinks to the back end of the paperwork. Update the old, the old job at the next work session and.
You were supposed to say that.
So I've been in this yard out here for, for, for Austin on his way to go chase this, and I.
Yeah, he goes flag.
Can I get a golf cart?
So stay up twenty-four hours. Um, so I did go and pull the base from the old go at all. I, I had it in my truck.
Okay.
So what we do is get a piece of pipe sleeve, we get it in the ground. We can do a concrete base round or whatever. It has a trim piece to go on there, it's cleaned up and. Back and shoot a little bit, but, but there's the other, then we can put the flag on.
Can we, while we're doing all the landscape lights?
Yes, so we have these spotlights on that flag.
So we have the flag up twenty-four percent.
Yes, because then we lit, so if we have.
Okay, so it's lit, then we are using the landscape lighting?
Yes.
Okay, so then the lighting for the landscape is the constant adjustment, correct?
Yes, it's, 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 it's on, yes.
That's cool.
Yeah, I'll just put it on the, the dusted on.
Yeah. Any other?
Review of action.
Review of action.
How are we doing with the roundabout? We give you a cow. We've actually been contacting them this week, so.
Keep that on there or take it off?
Just keep it on.
Keep it on.
Keep it on.
Contended upon everything.
Have, have you paid the five hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's all in here.
Yep, okay, so it's worth that, done. How about executing contract, contract for Larnet and Old Road? We have none. I'm waiting until next year. This is an extra budget, so perhaps just keep it on there. You can take off the reference that we, organized with me.
And the side ditch inventory?
No, that's all we have done. You can take off my list of pedestrian landscape lights for park. So we're still going to see, we're still doing those call. How do we inform Union County of the county's preference to use the river infrastructure, huh? Okay, we'll look at that. Oh, okay, what we can talk about right here is birthday. They can't even make six, that's a college gradations. What are we talking to do?
We also can't reserve the high school until the fall for that date.
Okay, so let's put that on the July one session really, we'll work over D three, then the October day, and we'll figure out what we're going to do. After we have our college gradations.
So then all. I just have to ask, like, dollars, whether we play it back, like, we would all go to the ceremony, stop the, or, 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 yeah, be graduated.
All right.
Don't need to change it then. Yeah.
Let's, let's put that on the, okay. Execute the contract for James Carter?
None of that already.
Okay, so we, first, the firework, what do you want to do on birthday?
Get him in today's dollars.
Like the banks or what? I got, I'm worried about it, it's fine. I got it, I got it. Okay, that's it. Let's do all the stuff on the dog.
Uh, you know, like that thing.
All right, anyone else? That's Kim.
My house keeping here.
Oh, all of us are just like, let it go. Last time. I got a few words for you. You can go, girl.
First, I'll go, it's okay, just tell me your, your heart attack. All right, good.
All right, next time, if you have some comments. Wayne will start with you since you can barely speak.
Very good, I can barely hear you. Uh, I have nothing to say except thanks to the wonderful good faces with me and all against the city, so.
We missed you, you're less.
This is still. Yeah, hang in there, man. It's still going around, so I really appreciate you showing up today on, on the web. Thank you.
Well, I don't really have a whole lot to say, but just normal stuff. Thank you to everybody for all they do. I know you, you know who you are.
Oh, you're talking my idea.
Wow.
Uh, no comment other than I want to thank Andy for all the work that he's been investing in the village park. Appreciate it.
Want, want to thank you for not calling.
Yes.
I want to thank you for, thank you for not always including me. Jerry.
Um, real shout out to the law enforcement. Be safe out there. Thanks for all you do. It's a thankless job. And we've, we've lost already this year too many law enforcement. Um, I don't know what in God's world is going around and people think that they're, they're, they're a hindrance to our society and they're here to protect us and for some reason the script is in turn on there. So as always, be safe. Even if you get a ticket, thank them for what they do.
Okay, good. Um, first off, thank staff as always and stuff for just doing the work you're doing here. It's just great stuff. Making us, that's a thank you. Um, blur on the tri W, just FYI, there's a couple of comments in here about the actual market day, which was about the only rise and then on the very back, um, was with the band booster and how that was part of that as well. Uh, I also did blur before then, they asked me to send them those graduating classes at Margaret High School on behalf of council and myself. The same thing I did last year, very similar anyway. Um, sent out about, that'll be coming in the next, um, so that I think this week's, uh, tri W news. But I, I wanted to see if there was a way, did we, and this is a question for you, Austin, did we reach out to the local news? Because obviously I went on WBTV to think that they weren't here to cover and then whether it was the car show or the, the days events and stuff.
We, we have a very large contact list of media, so Austin doesn't have it. We actually had our Marvin Day consultant do all that. So we did reach out to a lot of different media networks. I can't tell you right now off the top of my head which ones they were, but I can deal with it.
Because usually the newspaper we get that will cover it or someone will be there, but I don't think I saw that. But anyways, just going forward with that. Um, that said, congratulations to all graduates that are graduating. I think Margaret High School's ceremonies tomorrow morning. Hopefully good weather will be there. Um, middle school, high school, college or grad school, was that? Um, but, uh, again, congratulations on your, on your hard work and then summer starting for that. So, so everyone, uh, safe travels and maybe staying closer to home based on gas prices, but either way, safe travels. With that, we're moving into close session.
Congratulations to the close session. So it's C G S one four three dash three, home page, I'll find A six, it's best person.
All the way. All right. Push it past. Wayne, I'll give you a call myself. Okay.